It's Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, 6:00 PM. This regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners is called to order. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mayor Hendricks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews. Commissioner Taglerini.
Here.
Commissioner Kerr.
Here.
Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
All are present.
City Clerk, since Attorney Trask is not here, do you have an invocation by any chance that you would like to say?
I brought one, sir.
Did you? Okay.
I'm ready to go. If you're ready, I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful to be given this opportunity to serve our community. Please be with us as we weigh the pros and cons of each matter, give us wisdom on how to best represent the city of Madeira Beach and its residents. We also ask that you give us courage so that even when it's hard, we will continue to boldly represent our constituents' needs and those of the most vulnerable. In this, we pray, amen.
(Inaudible). 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 One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first is approval of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to move or change the order on the agenda tonight? All is good?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Sir, second? Okay. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next, we have a proclamation. It's Florida City Government Week, October 17th through the 23rd, 2022. Whereas, city government is the government closest and most to most citizens and the one that will most directly impact the residents. And whereas municipal governments provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life for the residents, make their city their home. And whereas, city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public comment to an understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas, city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas, Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence this branch of government. And whereas, the Florida League of Cities and its member cities have joined together to teach citizens about municipal government through a variety of activities. Now, therefore, I, John B. Hendricks, Mayor of the City of Madeira Beach, do recognize October 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as Florida City Government Week. And the City of Madeira Beach encourages all citizens, city government officials and employees to participate in events that recognize and celebrate Florida City Government Week. Encourages educational partnerships between city government and schools, as well as civic groups and other organizations. Supports and encourages Florida city governments to actively promote and sponsor Florida City Government Weeks. Passed and adopted by the City of Madeira Beach on this day, the 19th of October, 2022. Next is presentations. I don't think we have any presentations tonight. And next will be public comment. Public comment is encouraged. If you're addressing the commission, step up to the podium, state your name and address. And for the record, please limit your comments to three minutes and do not include any topic that is on the agenda. Public comment will be allowed on agenda items when they come up. Yes, Chuck? I guess you're first, huh?
Good evening. There's been a topic that you and yourself had brought up previously, and I think now with caddies with their new potential parking lot coming up, I would like to see what it would take to get six of our parking stalls back in Tom and Kitty Stewart Park. And there's a perfect place, the first six stalls on the left side would be able to have the no parking residence only signs that we have all over our streets right now, to be able to put those to good use, to get Tom and Kitty Stewart back a little bit to the residents. Thank you. And like I said, I don't know what it would take. You had mentioned it, you know, and it was discussed, so I just would like to bring that up again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Gay, 423 150th Avenue, Madeira Beach. I have some comments about solid waste management. Back in March and April of this year, I've noticed a lot of buildup of trash and construction debris next to the causeway on the D'Nunzio lot. That's the lot that used to be where owned by Holton, where Leverox was there, the fish plant was there, there's a marina shed there currently. It was bought by the D'Nunzio Group in 2018. But what they'd been doing is operating it for a period of time as a for-profit dump for construction debris. So on 310, I saw trucks going from Carnes' condo construction over on 150th Avenue going over there and dumping debris. They dumped probably about 12 loads of construction debris from condo B. On the 17th of March, Florida Structural Group out of Fort Myers was bringing rebar concrete in on barges and dumping it over there. If you looked at the lot, it was covered with piles of debris and trash. No attempts were made to clean that up. I contacted City Manager Gomez about that same time in early March and asked him to take a look at it. In early May, D'Nunzio had about 60 truckloads of dirt and debris hauled away from the project, but there was still a lot of debris on that lot. In fact, there's still a lot of debris on the lot today. The past two weeks, they've been trucking out more debris, but there's still four large piles of debris over there, and there's a dilapidated, strictly unsound marina that probably needs to be inspected for safety reasons by the city. I don't know if the city acted to get the site cleaned up, or if D'Nunzio is doing the cleanup on his own, but it's been almost nine, seven months since my complaint was filed. This brings me to the marina. The marina apparently has been operating a solid waste transfer station that is dumping solid waste over there and leaving it sit in, not in containers, but in bins at the back of the lot, very close to the eastern side of the lot itself, of the marina lot. It's illegal to do that. It's a violation of Section 54.36, Trash Accumulation in the City Code. So I sent an email to a city manager today requesting that he take a look at this issue. I sent him some pictures of the dumping that was being done. I asked him to report the dumping and drainage issues. This drains into Locust Yega Bay to DEP. I asked him to contact DEP for remediation and remediation damage to his neighbor's property and the bay shoreline. And I also asked to immediately cease and desist dumping solid waste at the marina. It's primarily a work process problem, so what they're doing is taking...
Thank you.
Anyway, I did submit a report to a bunch of people, so you know what it's about.
Good evening, all. Jim Ross, Tech 48, 137th Avenue Circle. And this is not related to, but, well, there's no way to describe it, I guess, but talking about the Planning Commission and some recent meetings concerning the ordinance changes with the C-4. If you look at the Planning Commission Division II, they have the authority to initiate amendments, zoning regulations, so long as all the requirements of public notice and hearing are adhered to. Well, if you go to that section, it says there, "At the time of the posting, all property owners of record on the tax rolls of the year within the case is heard, within 300 foot of any direction of the property of which the subject matter of application shall be notified." So I have to wonder, I don't think any of my neighbors back here were notified, there's multiple C-4 properties, so we're talking the notification of maybe 1,000 people? Maybe that is why none or very few, if at all, showed up at the Planning Commission meeting, which may, if they would have, have changed their vote. Just a food for thought here, that doesn't look like procedure was followed with the Planning Commission. Nobody was notified within 300 foot. That's all I got for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone else have any changes? Okay.
No.
Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written. Second?
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is public hearings. Ordinance 2022-23, Fees and Collection Procedure Manual, Second Reading and Public Hearing. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. Ordinance 2022-23, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the Fees and Collections Procedures Manual that was amended by ordinance 2021-28, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an immediate effective date.
Thank you. Floor is open for discussion. I think we've discussed this enough, we probably all know what's going on with it. Is there any public comment on this? Is there an ordinance on 2022-23?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-23.
Sir, second?
Second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022-28, Extend the Term of Natural Gas Franchise Agreement with Peoples Gas, TECO, Second Reading and Public Hearing.
Ordinance 2022-28, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, extending the term of the non-exclusive natural gas franchise with Peoples Gas System, a division of Tampa Electric Company for an additional five years, authorizing the assignment of the franchise to Peoples Gas Systems, Inc., a wholly-owned subsidiary of TECO Energy, Incorporated, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective...
Why do we have two C-4 on the agenda? And what's the other of all?
Beg your pardon?
One just specifies where accessory structures can go.
Director Portell, are you talking to us?
Do you remember which is which?
Linda, just mute your microphone for now, and then we'll get back with you. Thank you.
Would you like me to read it again?
Were you through?
I was almost at the end.
Can you just pick up where you left off?
I think I was at "a wholly-owned subsidiary of TECO Energy, Incorporated, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Okay. Floor is open for discussion. I think we've discussed this pretty good. Yeah. Okay. Is there any public comment on this? Do I have a motion on ordinance 2022-28?
I move we pass ordinance 2022-28.
Sir, second?
Second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022-29, Amendments to C-4, Marine Commercial Zoning District, First Reading and Public Hearing.
Ordinance 2022-29, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 110, zoning, Article 5, Districts Division 8, C-4, Marine Commercial, Section 110-347, permitted uses to delete the reference to second floor, amending Section 110-351, building setback requirements to provide that structures and working waterfronts and marina uses are permitted in the rear setback, amending Section 110-353, maximum lot coverage to correct references to Sections 110-355 and 110-356, amending Section 110-356, special requirements to delete reference to building separation related to building height, and providing for additional five-foot setback between non-residential use and C-4 and residential use of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have concerns. Mr. Ross, tech brought up that perhaps the meetings were not well announced, and I'm just now hearing about this, so I'd like to find out if those Planning Commission meetings were dutifully announced, and it seems odd that nobody would go. We have more than one marina, lots of areas where people live 300 feet from them. I feel like we should confirm that it was announced. I couldn't find it in the agendas and anything like that. I don't know. Maybe it's just because I don't know how to get around that website as well as I should. But can anybody validate, confirm that as of yet, or is that something we could check on? It seems like this is an important issue, to let, to make sure that residents do about it.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
Yeah, and I completely agree. Linda, was there notification, or were the, is there a rule that the people within 300 feet? Jim, that's what you said, right? It was 300 feet of the... Yeah, I mean, I just...
It's a 300-feet requirement.
It's a 300-feet requirement that the residents...
Yeah, Linda, Jenny, are you on?
The affected party, right? So, Linda, is it...
Can you hear me?
Yes. Please proceed.
Oh, okay. There we go. It muted me for some reason. Okay, yes, wherever we have a specific zoning change for a district, we have notified the people within 300 feet as any code. So we do a mailing notification, we also post the property, and all of those notification processes were conducted. It's actually not unusual that people don't show up at the Planning Commission hearing. We actually haven't had much of anybody present for all the years that I've been there, even when we widely encourage and make public appearances places to encourage that participation. And also, considering that 300 feet doesn't go very far, to tell you the truth, it would include a few residents along some of the C-4, but for the most part, there's very little C-4 that has residential zoning actually within exactly 300 feet of the property. So that's some of the issue there, is just the amount of notice that's required. We always keep a record of that. I don't have it present, and I'm not present there physically, but I can provide that record for the commission between first and second reading, for sure.
I would just like to know the dates exactly, because I have specific residents who've contacted me, they didn't know when the meetings were, and I just assume, you know, maybe you missed it, so... But now I'm hearing it, somebody came down here to tell me that it...
Sure.
So if I could just get those dates so I can have some answers, that'd be good.
Sure, sure, we'd be... And if we find that there was any kind of mistake, obviously, they would have to be re-advertised and the meetings re-housed.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, I'm sorry.
So I'm wondering if maybe we should postpone this until next meeting, until we can verify that?
We can surely do that. That's fine, we can just continue them, continue the first reading, I can come back with all of the records. That would give us the chance to verify everything was done correctly. If you would like to do that, would be both this item and the next item on the agenda.
I completely agree.
That's...
So does that mean we're not discussing it now, or we're just waiting for her to? We are discussing, because I do have other questions that I was going to ask, but if we're going to table it for a workshop...
Yeah, we can discuss it and just not vote on it until we verify that, and if we've missed something, give the residents a chance to get back to us on it.
I would defer to the city attorney on the matter, but I would suggest that since this is a public hearing on the item, that you withhold discussion until you've had assurance that all of the advertisement was held and that all of the meetings were conducted properly, so that people had complete access, not only to the item in mail, but also to all of your conversations.
I would agree with that assessment, absolutely.
All right. Let's do that, then. Let's back it... I would think, then, that covers ordinance 2022-30 also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, items C and D on the agenda, C and D. And also, for clarification, they were discussed, the Planning Commission meeting occurred on September the 12th, but we'll come back and clarify.
Was there a date for a second one? Because there was...
There's only one Planning Commission meeting to discuss.
To discuss this one?
Yes, that's the procedure, one Planning Commission meeting, and then they may, they can continue an item themselves, but if they do not continue it, they vote on it, and their vote is a recommendation to the commission in one direction or another.
Okay, so we can bring these at the next...
Yeah, it's not hurting.
Yes.
Just to wait until the next meeting.
City Attorney, we have to make a motion on that?
I would make sure it's clear that the whole commission agrees to delay it or defer to the next meeting and announce that date, so there is notice of that. Of course, it will be on the agenda, so there'll be ample notice, but just for clarification, I would make sure it's clear that it's an agreement and when it's going to be heard.
Okay. So since we are moving this, should we accept public comment now, or wait?
No. Referring it basically means it's not happening, it's not even on the agenda, so defer to the next meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to move ordinance 2022-29 and ordinance 2022-30 to the next regularly scheduled commission, Board of Commissioners meeting.
I second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022-31, Deleting Fireworks Display from Special Event Definition, Second Reading and Public Hearing.
Ordinance 2022-31, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Section 42-16 of Article 2, Special Events of Chapter 42, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach, by deleting the reference to firework displays in the definition of special event, providing for conflict and providing for an effective date.
Floor is open for discussion.
I have no comments on this one.
Okay.
No, this is just that the state has its own rules, and we're just agreeing to the state and the county rules. It's nothing...
Right. Okay. Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion on ordinance 2022-31?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-31, Deleting Fireworks Display from the Special Events Definition, Second Reading.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is for COP alcohol beverage license application, 2022-02, for John's Pass Grill, located at 111 Boardwalk Place, West Number 203, Madeira Beach, Florida, 33708.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so I'm going to read the procedures. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and imply those finding of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances. In order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it, the board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. I would ask at this time if any member of the commission has had any ex parte communications with the applicant. Hearing none, I would ask if any of the members of the board have a conflict of interest with this application. If anyone is present that wishes to testify, can they stand and raise their right hand? And I am done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is Director Portell?
Well, yes, Andrew Morris is there from our staff to present you with the information. He should have raised his hand there to swear in.
And we'll jump back and do that. You swear to tell the truth.
And I would be glad also swear in from here.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
And Andrew, would you go ahead and make the presentation?
Okay. Let me just make sure the mic's on. Okay. So Section 110, 534, the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, requires the approval by the Board of Commissioners for an existing alcohol beverage zone property to change to an alcoholic beverage license of greater intensity. A new application would be reviewed for all factors located under Section 110, 532. Pursuant to Section 110, 539, the notice of public hearing was properly sent to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject property 15 days prior to the scheduled consideration by the Board of Commissioners. Such notice has also been posted on the subject property. Section 110, 532, requires that the Board of Commissioners shall consider the following factors for the alcohol beverage application, staff analysis follows each factor. So the first factor, we look at as the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcohol beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. John's Pass Grill currently has an active two-COP alcohol beverage license that was approved in 2019. Section 110, 534, the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, requires approval by the Board of Commissioners to change to an alcohol beverage license of greater intensity. The applicant is applying for a special food service establishment for COP alcohol beverage license to be able to sell liquor alongside their current beer and wine offerings. A previous tenant, this location, had an approved special food service establishment for COP alcohol beverage license. Other nearby businesses in John's Pass Village have alcohol beverage licenses that allow for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor. The proposed change in alcohol beverage license would fit within the existing character of the neighborhood. The next... The next criteria, we look at the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcohol beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. John's Pass Grill is existing restaurant that has an active two COP alcohol beverage license. The proposed change in alcohol beverage license would allow liquor to be sold along their existing beer and wine offerings. It still would continue to be a restaurant, so the use of the property wouldn't change. Continuing the existing restaurant use with just adding the liquor, it wouldn't create a congestion or present a safety hazard. As stated earlier, a previous tenant had, had the same classification of alcohol license as being requested in this current application. The next one is whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the location for which it is proposed. John's Pass Grill is not located within 300 feet of a church, synagogue, temple, or place of religious worship. Public or private school operate for the institution of minors or youth recreation communities there. Other nearby businesses in John's Pass Village sell alcohol, including liquor. Selling liquor at an existing restaurant would be compatible with the location. John's Pass Grill is located in the C1 tourist commercial zoning district. This zoning district is primarily a commercial district, and it's focused on both serving tourists and, and residents. Next one is whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect public safety. John's Pass Grill would continue to be a restaurant. The proposed alcohol beverage license changed. The only change to their existing restaurant would be adding liquor to the menu. The proposed change in alcohol beverage license use would not adversely affect public safety since they already have an approved alcohol license. The last one is no application for review under section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. The applicant does not have any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed to the city. Fiscal impact is not applicable. Recommendations, staff recommends the approval of the special food service establishment for COP alcohol beverage license, stating intent to sell beer, wine, and liquor for consumption on premise at John's Pass Grill. Attached to the staff report is the application, public notice, mailing, and posting, and site pictures of, of the restaurant.
Thank you. You know, this establishment had a four COP earlier. Does it, does that go away with transfer of ownership of the restaurant? Or does that pass with it? I, I don't know why they're coming back to us for something that they had.
Previously, I've seen this happen where, like, where someone doesn't transfer the alcohol license over. This happened at a convenience store where previous, like, just skipped town and couldn't, the state requires someone to sign over the existing license, and if, for some reason, they don't do that, then you have to go back through the whole process again.
Okay.
So.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I knew they, because I've eaten at that restaurant before, and I knew they had it previously. Okay, I have no more questions.
I have a question. Currently, their hours are, I don't know if anybody here can answer this, their hours are 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. seven days a week. Can they extend their hours once they get this liquor license to just sell liquor? Or do they always have to be serving food? Or is there anything that prevents them from doing that?
I mean, they're classified as a restaurant, so at least in our code, majority of their revenue has to come from food.
So they, they couldn't stop, close the grill at nine and then keep selling booze till midnight or something like that? Well, I, I don't know. Maybe they.
I would think they could close their grill. The key is that 51% of their business be food.
Right. Okay.
Because there are a number of restaurants that do quit selling food at 10 or 11 o'clock at night, but they keep their facility open and have music and have drinks.
They just have to be careful to make sure they don't sell more booze than food.
Right.
Got it.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. When I go to the website, it shows there's a drink menu. It shows margaritas, daiquiris, something called take a cab. Aren't those already alcoholic drinks that they're serving now?
It sounds like, hey, what I'm guessing is they probably have a beer and wine license, and what they do is they can, for example, the Snack Shack has the same thing. They can sell you a daiquiri, but it's made from an alcohol that's wine-based. So that would be what I would think is probably what, what they're doing. I, I thought they had a regular liquor license there, though. I mean, I thought that they had.
I think Lisa's Cafe did that for a while before she got her liquor's license. She had pre-made, and they called them daiquiris and margaritas, but it was wine-based alcohol. They were canned, so probably, I mean, I've been to this restaurant, I always thought they had a liquor license too, but I'm guessing that's what's they're do, what's.
They might have, the, the old owners might have sold it, sold the liquor license and just sold it as a restaurant and come back. I mean, I, I've got no problem with this, and I doubt very seriously this is gonna turn into a nightclub or anything after hours either, so, you know, food's good, so I'm good for it.
Yeah, I'm fine too, but the other thing is, in the pictures, it shows a bar, and in the drawing, I don't see a bar, or maybe it's cut off, or are they do, are they renovating the place so that one or two of these, or one of the two is accurate, or?
I was just there the other day. They have the bar.
I think, in this drawing, it's showing beer, it's showing server station, that is the bar.
Ah, okay.
Were there any comments from neighbors or anything during the posting period?
I didn't receive any notice of intent or getting emailed any or.
With, with its location, it's surrounded by other businesses. It's, I don't know if you know where it is.
Well, I don't know exactly, but I would imagine letter, you know, comments of support or just any comments. I just didn't know if there was any comments.
Actually, it's kind of a hidden place. It's upstairs in that building where Delos's is. It's, it's upstairs, and it's across from the boardwalk, so it's pretty isolated, really.
Okay, I know which one it is now. I, I remember when they came in for their reg, for their four C, or their two COP.
Any other comments from the commission? Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion on this ordinance, on this license?
I move we approve the application number 2022 dash O2 for John's Pass Grill.
Is there a second?
Second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is special magistrate lien at First Street East, Madeira Beach, case number 2022. Point 1255. Andreas Tree? Trey?
Yes, this was, this was brought before the, the board previously by Mr. Trask in July of this year, I believe it was, and there is some information on the packet. There is a outstanding lien. There was an offer to resolve the lien for $1,200. The board was not interested in that and asked to possibly resolve the lien for $5,000. She has agreed to do that if the board wants to still resolve the lien, which is little over $17,000 for $5,000.
Floor is open for discussion.
She met the number that we suggested, so I think.
As I understand, she's just agreeing to our request, right?
That's correct.
Any other comments? As y'all know, I'm not a big fan of reducing these.
I think you were the one that gave us that number.
Well, could, could have been. That's because y'all were beating me about the head. Is there any public comment on this?
Chuck Dillon, 529 Lilly, and John, I completely agree with you. I mean, a knock in $17,000 that the magistrate had determined was fair, and that's what, as I was looking at paperwork, that was $1,200 was offered. I mean, you know, I know times are hard, but yet knocking it down a third, that's big. And this is one of the things that I think we have a problem with this city, is enforcing codes and ordinances. And in, in a way, it's a slap in the face to us. I mean, you know, because like, you know, we go through this whole process, it takes all this time, have a magistrate come in and do that, and it's, you know, I feel sorry for the lady, kinda, but you know, I'm sorry. You know, I, I agree with John. You know, maybe cutting it a little bit, but cutting it by two-thirds, you know, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion on this, this case, 2020 point 1255?
I'll make a motion to approve the special magistrate lien settlement at $5,000.
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
No.
The motion carried four to one.
Next is contracts and agreements. First is city manager employment agreement, first amendment.
Yes, thank you. My understanding from Mr. Trask is this was something the board had requested, so he has drawn up the paperwork to address an increase in the compensation for the city manager plus an extension of his contract.
Correct, with, and those are the only changes in the contract.
That is correct.
Correct. Floor is open for discussion. Any public comment on this? Do I have a motion to pass this agreement, the city manager employment agreement?
I'll make a motion to pass the city employee, city manager employment agreement, first amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is adopt a Clarion consulting agreement, fiscal year 2023.
Mayor and commissioners, as we had discussed back at the workshop, this is the annual agreement with Clarion for the software that, again, an annual agreement, excuse me. We are with this agreement. The only change is that we continue to utilize Clarion, appointing Andrew Lafflin to assume the duties of the city's finance director and city treasurer, and also a slight increase in the agreement, a 2.8% increase over the prior year. We will pay Clarion a fixed monthly fee of $7,400 per month. If we were to hire a full-time city treasurer, finance director, I think the cost would be a little bit higher than what we are currently paying. And so far, we believe that Mr. Lafflin McLaren has done a very, very good job in the city's, managing the city's finance department. Can I be to answer any questions?
Thank you. I'm sure we've been all over this, basically for the past few years since Mr. Lafflin's been here, so I have no questions.
I have nothing. I'm in agreement of it.
Floor is open for comment. Do I have a motion to adopt a Clarion consulting agreement, fiscal year 2023?
I'll make a motion to adopt the Clarion consulting agreement for financial year 2023.
Second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is Pinellas County interlocal agreement, providing for control of illicit discharge within Pinellas County.
Sorry, mayor and commissioners, this agreement that we're required with Pinellas County, really with all the municipalities that utilize or have your own stormwater system, or commonly known as a municipal separate storm sewer system, we are entering into an agreement under, really under federal code and Florida statutes to allow us to be a participant in that, and so we are required just to obtain permits through the federal Department of Environmental Protection to allow, to be able to discharge and utilize our stormwater system. The agreement allows for the county to manage, obviously, our sewer system, which includes all of the maintenance of it, and we manage, we provide our own stormwater system, so we provide all the cleanouts, the maintenance, street sweeping, et cetera, involved in that. So this is just a, an annual, I believe it's for one year. I'm sorry, looking at, it's a multi-year agreement, but pretty standard agreement with the county simply to participate in the program.
Yeah, this is pretty much the standard agreement that all the cities are going through, as I understand. Any discussion amongst the commission?
Just to add one more thing, we are required to provide an annual report, which we do every year, of the work that we did and how our operations and how we managed our, our stormwater system. And then they come back to us and, and provide comments back and then do an audit periodically. So we've done quite well in meeting the requirements of the, of the national pollution discharging processes.
Did we have any problems in the past year?
I don't think we had. Our audit came back quite well. I don't recall any specific areas or issues to correct. We do, I know we've had discussions with residents regarding what I would call, I guess, with the backflow devices, the kind of, that we needed to clean more frequently to alleviate some of the flooding, particularly during high tides, and we're doing that a little bit more regularly to make sure that alleviates some of the flooding. But in looking at the audit that we received several months ago.
July.
July, no, no concerns or real issues.
And we are audited every five years, so it's a five-year system, so he was here on-site, drove around the city, saw construction sites, saw our public works yard. There were no issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comments on this? Is there a motion to pass?
I'll make a motion to pass the Pinellas County interlocal agreement, providing for control of illicit discharge within Pinellas County.
I second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is new business. I don't know that we have any new business, so we will move on to staff reports, city managers' report, September 2022.
Thank you, mayor and commissioner, and also thank you for your vote a few items ago, very much appreciated. So I'll begin the report, as everyone is aware, we dealt with the storm a few weeks ago. We're very fortunate as to the, the minimal, I would call it minimal, impact outcomes here in our city and the county and in our area. Of course, our hearts go out to everybody down south, and, but we certainly do appreciate all the, the wonderful work, especially the mayor and the rest of you in the commission supporting and providing all the relief efforts that have occurred, and some of them that are still occurring and getting supplies down and on lots of items down south to help those that were much more seriously impacted than around here. So really, a giant thank you to all the, to the chamber. Uh, so really, a giant thank you to all the, to the Ch- Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce, uh, to certainly Representative Linda Cheney, again, to the mayor and all of you in the commission, and really all of our residents, not just in Madera Beach, but around us that have really contributed quite a bit. And I know it's a lengthy, uh, list of, of those that have contributed and, and we greatly do appreciate that. Uh, again, it's important that, once storms like that, hurricanes, tropical storms are near our coast, that everybody stay informed as to what might be happening. And, I mean, that kind of takes our, the majority of our time, seeing what's going to happen, whether we evacuate or not. Uh, this time, from what I was, uh, from what I observed and communicating with some of my colleagues in other cities, the communication, the cooperation between the cities and the county was, uh, from what I was told, but I have not been here since 2015, about the best that it's ever been in terms of the notifications, uh, among all the, essentially the 25 governments, the 24 municipalities, uh, and Pinellas County. Hopefully, most residents are aware that the county becomes essentially the main emergency operations function, uh, and through, with the county administrator taking the lead. Um, he, we were having, uh, near, two meetings per day throughout the, that entire week, uh, to provide all the updates that I then provided to all of you. And certainly, Mr. Burton, a lot of kudos to him. He handled the, the situation very well, as well as the county, um, commission. So in the future, uh, hopefully, that should continue. And just a reminder to everybody that, once hurricane watch and hurricane warnings are issued, since we're on an island, it is important to heed those and, and we're very appreciative that quite a few of our residents and businesses certainly, uh, did that. Uh, again, we are still in hurricane season, even though it's 50 degrees outside or something like that. But just still, we need to be vigilant. We need to make sure that we have our plan and what we're going to do should an evacuation order occur. Uh, as I had shared with the commission and shared with many residents, we did have our, our city emergency operations center, uh, here at this facility, as well as, uh, the fire department, uh, working the 12-hour, the 24-hour shifts at the fire station. Um, so we were here the entire time, to the entire duration, um, along with numerous Pinellas County Sheriff's Office deputies that were on 12-hour shifts as well. Um, so it was a very concerted team effort to, to ensure, again, that everything was going as it should here in the city. And, uh, when the order came to evacuate, that seemed to, I mean, go fairly well. And then, once the county allowed the re-entry, uh, and the sheriff's deputies were kind of setting up the, the entry station in front of our marina, that seemed to go well. So a few things, uh, just reminders into the future, and there in the report, uh, encourage everybody to sign up for the Ready Pinellas. Um, they have an app that gives you all the information, the orders as they're coming out. Uh, you can go in and search, uh, for others, other than where we are, but your evacuation zone, uh, shelters, what's open, what's not. Uh, so certainly strongly encourage folks to, to download, if you haven't already, the Ready Pinellas, uh, app. Uh, but certainly, you can also just log in online and, and be able to pull that, the information as it's happening. Uh, again, we remind folks that we, we are open and lots of information through our internet site, also through the cities app that we have, uh, but certainly, we appreciate people stopping by, attending these meetings. Uh, we are here for, for residents to provide the services that we do. Uh, again, thanks also to our two cleanup, or the main cleanup organizations here in our city, the Trash Pirates, the Trash Turtles, they continue to have cleanups, uh, over the past month and more are scheduled this month. I believe the Turtles are having one this Saturday. And then November, the first Saturday, November, the Trash Pirates will be out, um, throughout the city. Uh, again, just included in the update, uh, the adoption of our fiscal year 2023, um, budget, certainly appreciate the commission approving, uh, that and keeping our millage rate, um, the same and also providing for some of the, uh, personnel adjustments, including salary increases to all, um, all of our employees. Uh, so do encourage folks to take a look at, at this report and all the information and data that's in it. We will be bringing back, on November the 9th, a, an agreement for recycling that will have a, we'll have a new provider, Waste Pro, and we will be coordinating with them likely through the month of December for the delivery of the new 65-gallon, 65-gallon contain, recycling containers that will have a lid. So we will be, begin here shortly disseminating the information as to the logistics, how that will work. But really, it'll be fairly seamless to, particularly to all of our residential customers, that the, uh, the 18-gallon container will be collected and then a 65, well, likely the 65-gallon container will be delivered before the, the blue 18-gallon collect, uh, containers are, are collected, because they are from two different companies. Did you have a question? Sorry, I thought Commissioner Hudson was about to have a question. Sorry. But we will, we'll provide that information and also provide quite a bit of a media information or to remind folks as to how to properly recycle, what is recyclable, what is not, and even in provide flyers with all of that information. So more to come on, on that, uh, in, throughout November and into, um, December. Again, we continue to have numerous events throughout the, the month, including continuing our 75th anniversary celebration with more events scheduled, um, upcoming. Uh, we, there's a, uh, status update on various, uh, city projects, more detailed than under the public work section. Um, but we are, one project that's not detailed on here, um, in addition to a, a bigger project and it's similar to the beach groins where we, that project is in the process of, of their permitting through the state and through the U.S. Army Corps, is also the Johns Pass dredging. Uh, that is going through the preliminary permitting as well. Uh, and we've submitted the information to the state for the, uh, the appropriations, uh, reimbursement, or it's a grant program, the appropriation that we received. And so that continues to move, uh, through the process. We're hoping that the actual dredging, uh, at this point, depending on the, on the permitting, that it may begin as early as January. Uh, but we'll keep, uh, everybody, uh, updated on that as well.
Mr. Gomez?
Yes.
Um, I thought I saw on one of your, maybe it was your Thursday, uh, email, the one time you gave a Thursday instead of a Friday, that the, the resident parking only on the, uh, on the streets project was going, but it, but that's not here. Is that, because it's been changed or?
No, just, uh, we're still tweaking and finalizing. We have the area, well, if you're, we have a specific area, I'm not sure if that's what you're?
Yep.
Alluding to, and we will, so we want to notify the neighborhood first as to how, so, and then we will begin likely in November to add the additional signage.
Because it, so there will be, sorry, I know that's not here, but I just, uh, so the, the residents will get a heads up?
Yes.
That's it, okay, good.
And a few of the businesses, because it will impact at least?
At least one.
At least one business, possibly two. Um, so, right, to go through that process.
Thank you.
And again, just listing in here, a lot of upcoming events, uh, still, including, well, for the later this month, we have the, uh, Johns Pass Trick or Treat and Final Friday on October the 28th, but lots of other events in November, including the Veterans Boat Parade. Uh, and we're still in sea turtle season, just a reminder to everyone to be mindful, there's, I think, one nest that I saw earlier today out on the sand. Uh, and then specific department updates that are in the report, our building department, just some updates on some of the private developments and, uh, you know, the Azul townhomes, uh, between 154th and 155 are, are being, the foundation's been poured and that continues as well as the, the, the other condo over here on 150th. Uh, I did make the, the commission aware, there is a proposal, uh, for the Holiday Isles, uh, projects, the ones on, uh, on 150th Avenue, that there appears to be, the property is under contract to be sold. Um, that is the information we have now and we will advise back, uh, if and when that does take place. Um, but that, and there'll be a lot more coming back, related to that. Uh, we still had quite a bit of building, uh, permit activity throughout the month, really not much of a, of a decline, uh, over $3 million in estimated value of the permits that were issued. Um, just, you can see the listing of the different types of permits, um, that we issued. Parking, we finished, uh, the year, a little over 3.5 million in revenue for the entire year. Um, of that, 400,000 is the additional 50 cents that was approved last year, specifically for the parking garage. Um, so the parking, uh, continued to do quite well. The, including, um, some of the additional enforcement that I think the city had, due to COVID, had greatly reduced, and now we're back to, um, so, significant enforcement, ensuring that people do pay and that they park, uh, properly, that visitors pay to park and that, uh, others, residents park in where they should. Uh, again, just listing of more events, including, I forgot, this Sunday's the fire department's 5K, um, the Legends Never Die 5K out on the, the sand here. Uh, of course, we have an election coming up in November. Appreciate the clerk, um, all the work in order to get all of that coordinated, as well as coordinating with the Civil Service Commission, um, quarterly meetings. And just perusing through, again, a few other, um, departments. I mentioned Public Works, listing the, a list of the projects that are ongoing. Uh, our marina, still, uh, they, we held the, back in September, the, a water-land cleanup that took place on the 17th of September, and we're very appreciative of all the volunteers, the sponsors. I think over a ton of waste was removed, uh, from land and the water. And again, the Trash Pirates and the Trash Turtles certainly helped out in spreading the information and so, and upcoming, we have the first weekend in November, the, the Fall King of the Beach Tournament, so that's on November 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And again, our marina revenue, granted, September tends to be a little slower time, but, uh, revenue continues to, to do well. And again, unleaded fuel, I think it was a little bit over $5 a gallon, um, today, but just seems like gasoline prices are continuing to increase. And, uh, lastly, just to go over, before I get to recreation, reminding folks of, to keep your grass clippings and other items from our drains, all the rainwater, stormwater that goes into our drains eventually ends up in the Gulf. So we really want to keep that as clean and contain the yard debris and keep all the debris, um, away from the storm drains, uh, including any type of trash, et cetera, that might be happening. Uh, we're waiting the, another, uh, larger project, our Gulf Boulevard Utility Undergrounding, we're waiting for Duke Energy, uh, to provide us some additional information for the costs. Once we have that, we're hoping that they can be out here, uh, by next month to begin that, to underground the utilities. Uh, they may have seen some work being done on the bridge over to Treasure Island, uh, FDOT replaced, uh, the lights on our side, and then they were doing some sealing on, on the underpart as you walk, uh, from the Johns Pass Park parking lot over to Hubbard's Marina and to the Village. Uh, and there are also related to that is a little bit of the drainage improvements, uh, next to that, to alleviate some of the flooding up on Gulf Boulevard, uh, mainly at 131st. And for our recreation, just continue coordinating after school, lots of the classes from the yoga and, and also after-school care, but you can see a list of, of events that I already mentioned, some of them happening over the next few weeks, uh, all the way, well, actually over the next couple of months, nearly all the way up to our Festival of Lights Boat Parade, uh, on December 10th. And I think that concludes, and just, uh, two other quick updates. Uh, we are still waiting for, as I spoke today with, or communicated with our Pinellas County Sheriff's Captain, uh, regarding, uh, but, but one concern that's been brought up regarding a specific business that Commissioner Taglerini, uh, brought up, and we're waiting to hear back as to their review, uh, in, as to what the next steps are. And also the ordinance regarding the no wake or minimum wake, uh, we need to obtain actual data that we hope in the marine unit has regarding, um, any type of citations, warnings, or other dangerous situations involving boats near, near our city or near the, kind of the areas of Bay Point to, to Crystal Island, uh, that we, that the state is requesting from us in order to eventually approve, uh, the ordinance that, that the council adopted a couple of years ago. At the same time, we were notified of several signs that apparently have faded, um, some of the wake signs that we're going to be able to replace over the next, hopefully over the next week. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments.
That's all you got?
I can add more if you'd like.
A question on?
No, thank you very much. It's always a, uh, very thorough, uh, report that you give us, Mr. Gomez.
A question on the no wakes. Um, I see people now with, um, powered paddleboards or, um, surfboards. What are they classified as and?
So they're electric, uh, it's an electric, um, Jay, you might know Dino's, I forget, it's, I think they call them like electric foil paddleboards. Um, I've seen them out here, not so much, every now and then out on the Gulf. Um, I've asked the marina unit and the, the sheriff's marine unit, and they're kind of trying to determine, uh, but I haven't asked, uh, what, if the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission has any suggestions as well, but, uh, as long as, they have to follow the same, even though they're, they're not, I don't believe they're considered a boat, because they don't have an internal combustion engine. And again, it's electric, although I guess you could have an electric boat. Uh, I mean, in theory, but it was something that we're reviewing still, because it's a little, I think, a little confusing, it's a little newer technology, and so therefore it's not regulated as of yet, is the, my impression.
So I understand that the FWC is requiring, um, proof?
Pretty, pretty mu- yeah, proof of, show us why you're, you're, want to make this change and with data and evidence and whatever you may have, so that we can approve your, your ordinance and allow for this change, and that's?
And how far back do you go on that, and that? I'll, I'll, I'll give you the reason I ask, is because when this came up and it was debated and unanimously approved by the board, uh, for the ordinance, um, many meetings with the, um, with everyone. Uh, it was recommended that when boats were on plane, going by your, dangerously, by your docks, to call in and report them so that you'd have this information, um, with the, uh, Pinellas County Sheriff's Department, which many neighbors did at that time. But you just kind of get worn down after a while and you don't, every time a boat comes by, you don't call.
Understood.
So.
According to the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, they did not receive any data related to that.
I know personally, I called dozens of times at that time, because, and my neighbors, I don't, I can't speak for them, but it was discussed, um, because boats were on plane within 20 feet of my dock. And we share those waters with people in kayaks and, and electric wakeboards and, and, um, it's just like driving down Gulf Boulevard, you have to give them, um, room. So anything that I can do, or if our neighbors can do, please bring it to our attention so that we can, uh, get this through the state.
I, uh, I think the sheriff's department may feel like if they didn't see it, they're not going to pursue it. I don't know if that's a fact, but I know that's the case on a lot of things. Um, and just food for thought, you may want to put a ring camera in there, out there so you can document it. Just, just an idea. So you can say, hey, look, here's the boat and here's its FL numbers.
Now, there was definitely, you had a lot of discussion and a lot of review and comments. It's, when I communicated with FWC, they were like, well, this is the first time we've received this and here's what you need to provide to show this. And so there's, uh, if there were calls made to the sheriffs, I mean, we can go back, I mean, they can go back, and that's what I've requested for, I, I either put two or three years, but I'm sure we can go back even more to show, the, again, calls that have been made and hopefully they're recorded, or any other types of, of enforcement activity.
Yeah. Yeah, I personally was calling multiple times a day on boating days.
Maybe we need to call FWC rather than the Sheriff's Department.
Well, I think the, I mean, the sheriff is much more, the Marine Unit is now considerably spending more time in this area, mainly due to the derelict boat program, let's call it, whereas FWC, you see them, but, I mean, I'm not under the, I don't believe that they're boating as frequently in these waters as the Sheriff's Marine Unit is, but we can.
Well, I'm specifically saying that because if they're wanting documentation, maybe that's the agency to be calling, because it doesn't appear that the Sheriff's Department is pursuing it. And I know Commissioner Kerr is correct, because I've been along there numerous times. It's almost like people think because the channel itself is no wake, they can go up close to the houses where they're not in the channel and run fast. I know because I've been going along there idling in my boat and had them blow by me, so.
Okay, though.
Anything else?
Okay.
Good, thank you, sir. Next is agenda setting for the October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two regular workshop meeting. First is, I guess, a presentation by Visit St. Pete, Clearwater, both cities that are suburbs of Madeira Beach. I love doing that. Planning impact fees review with Jerry Murphy, University of Florida, PD checklist, height requirement, employee, spouse, dependent care assistance, discussing that, special magistrate lien on common areas associated with one-three-seven-zero-four, one-three-seven-zero-six, one-three-seven-zero-eight, and one-three-seven-ten Gulf Boulevard, Madeira Beach, that's case number twenty-twenty-point-one-one-one-six, Mitchell Beach Condo Association, and charter amendments for March twenty-twenty-three municipal I would like to add resident parking for Kitty Stewart Park onto here, and let's at least have some discussion on it. I know that's been an issue since that restaurant opened, see if we can at least discuss maybe getting some resident spots in there designated. Is there anything else anyone else would like to discuss?
Do we need to add the C4 discussion here, or is this just going to come out at the next regular meeting?
I think that's coming back to the next regular meeting after they verify whether or not everything was done properly as far as advertising and whatnot.
We had a comment in the minutes about adding bike parking racks in different locations in the city. Is that something, I think we have more than enough here, but I, sometime in the future, is that a topic for discussion?
Could be, as many signs as we're putting up. It's almost like we've got bike racks all over the city now. Yes, ma'am?
I do have bike racks, they've been ordered for probably close to six weeks now, so we're just waiting for them to come in.
Okay, super. Where are they being put? Do you know offhand, or is that something we need to discuss?
Archibald, Johns Pass Park, one hundred and thirtieth, those major areas, Johns Pass Village, we just have to find safe locations for them, we're not impeding the sidewalks.
How about ROC Park? I think we've got a few, don't we?
There are some located in there, especially next to the dumpster area, closer to the building, there's a bike rack.
You think that's sufficient?
We can always look at adding more, I believe I have six to eight coming, I'm not exactly sure off the top of my head.
Okay, okay. Anything that'll hold a Harley up?
They're recycled plastics, so maybe.
All right, has anyone else got anything?
Okay, just, Mayor and Commissioner, we are going to discuss our trash containers, the toters and tippers at the, the next week, so that's just one additional item.
Recycling containers?
No, Megan, these are for the regular.
These are a few modifications that we are looking at to do with the residential route, adding some items to the trucks and then swapping over to city purchased trash cans provided.
So similar to the recycling, the new recycling ones that are coming.
So you're looking at eventually maybe like a guy on a truck dumping the can?
We're looking at long-term, probably turning it into a two-man crew versus a three.
Well, you know, our service is one thing that our residents love.
It wouldn't change the service.
Okay, as long as our service doesn't change, that's the important part, because those guys, your guys, and you can tell them, they're on a pedestal with all the residents in Madeira Beach.
There are just one thing I would like to change, but we can save that for the workshop.
Okay. All right, thank you. So are we, are we going to discuss that then?
At the next workshop, just to, yeah, just, it's a preliminary discussion as to what we're looking to do likely no earlier than, boy, probably, yeah, April, but again, it'll, to sort of mirror what we're, what will be happening with recycling, will be with our residential trash collection.
Okay, I would just like to reassure the residents that our sanitation department is not going anywhere.
No, correct, no, we're, these are.
And our service is not going anywhere.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, so let's go over what we've got on here then. We've added, we've added residence parking at Kitty Stewart Park and discussion on the larger trash bins for our sanitation department. That's it? Okay, great. Next is reports and correspondence, first up is the commissioners. Commissioner Taglerini, do you have anything for us?
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Kerr?
I have nothing, no.
Commissioner Hudson?
The only thing I've heard is the way the Sheriff's Department ran the exiting and entering the island this time was wonderful compared to what it was in the past, having the badges and you just drove by, and everybody really liked that.
Good, thank you. Vice Mayor Andrews?
Nothing this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I have a few things I'd like to mention, that is, probably top on the list was that we collected items for Hurricane Ian relief. Those of you in this audience that have not participated, I wish you would. I went down there, I was out on Fort Myers Beach with Representative Cheney and some other representatives from that area two weeks ago today, long before the residents were allowed out there. It's total devastation. Houses that were up on pilings, I saw a lot of pilings, I didn't see any houses, so, and I would say they were probably built pre-Andrew, but there were just, there were pilings all over, the high, the high-rise condos seemed to survive pretty well, except all of their AC units that were on the roof became missiles. They were all over the place, they were through cars, they were through houses, I've got photos of them just strewn throughout the island, I saw a lot of vacant land. So I will say, when they say get out, get out. We made a second trip down to Inglewood, myself and a friend, and took a load of supplies to them. What's been forgotten by the general public is that more was hit than just Fort Myers and Fort Myers Beach. We took a load to Inglewood, the smaller communities are not getting help coming in. So we took stuff to the Chamber of Commerce down there, and they were really appreciative. I got a call from the governor's office, saying, because they know we're taking stuff down as a city, and they said that the Charlotte County Sheriff's Department had thirty-five or thirty-seven deputy sheriffs whose homes were flooded and totaled, and all that time, they were working. So this that we've just collected, and I've bought two carloads of stuff, and other people have bought a lot of stuff, Mayor Dave Gaddis of Bel Air Beach is bringing a truckload down for us tomorrow, the American Legion has been collecting for us, so we're making another run, we'll load up tomorrow and take it down to the Charlotte County Sheriff's Office on Friday. And now what they really need is they need money. So I would ask that you start contributing, rather than bringing supplies, contribute to myflorida.gov for Hurricane Ian relief, because if anybody wants to see pictures, I did a video from one end of Fort Myers Beach to the other, and it's just, it's just total destruction. There was a man down there that lost his boat, he found it four miles inland. So a lot of the fishing boats that were down there, big commercial fishing boats, you'd see stacks of eight, ten, twelve of them just stacked half a mile up into the mangroves, just unbelievable. So that's, that's the only thing I've got, is that I just wanted to let everyone know those people need some help, and it could have been us. Anyone else? That's it? City Attorney, have you got anything for us?
No, sir.
Mr. Gomez, you've already given us a bunch, have you got anything else for us?
Mayor, just thank you for your update, and can't say enough about your efforts in leading the hurricane relief, so thank you, and thank you to Vice Mayor and Commissioners as well for your continued support of our staff.
Next is city clerk, have you got anything for us?
I do, real fast, printed agenda packets, some, I got a comment from one that would like to only want electronic packet, is there anyone else on the commission that would only want electronic packets and no printed copies?
I want paper because I make, you know, I go through and I highlight stuff I want to be sure I talk about.
Paper, 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 okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, having no other business, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-one PM.